And everyone and welcome to the August twenty third, two thousand and twenty one, Twalton City Council work session. Tonight we have a couple of items to discuss and we'll start off with our police chief with the police department updates. Welcome Chief Steel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Member of Council. Here to talk about a few things going on within the police department. Let's share my screen here. All right. So. All right, so a couple of things we're going to talk about tonight and I'm going to start off with our mental health response team. And if you remember, this is a program that's been in place in the county for a number of years that we're jumping on board with. We've got a partnership with Tiger Twalton and Sherwood to contribute some funding that you proved to get us the mental health clinician that will pair up with a police officer in a police car that will respond to a variety of different calls for service that we receive within the police department. It's really a dual response type initiative. The mental health clinician has an access into the the mental health world that our police officers don't normally have a privy to the information. It allows them to do things like put people into custody on a director's hold through the mental health department. It just gives us access to a lot of tools that we normally wouldn't have. So we're excited to be very close to having this program up and running in the south end of the county. We've got the IGA has been signed. The mental health commission is going to be ultimately housed out of our police department in Twalton. So they'll be readily available to respond to not only our community, but those in Sherwood and Tigerd as well. We've identified the biggest need for ideally it'd be nice to have twenty four seven coverage, but that's just not realistic right now. So what we're going to start off with is really swing shift type hours. Those are our busiest times of the day typically. This team of personnel will work from one P M. until eleven P M. Tuesday through Friday. And we're getting ready to get this program up and running the first of September. One of the biggest challenges has been finding a clinician. There was some information presented to the Washington County Board of Commissioners last week. That the Health and Human Services Department has over fifteen positions that they have funding for that they just cannot fill with. There's just a lack of people wanting to do that type of work. We've been fortunate that they identified an individual named Crystal Fisher. She currently works at the Washington County Hawthorne Walkin Center in Hillsborough. That's a center that's available for people to seek out help with mental illness. And she's expressed an interest in coming and joining our team. So that is who we will be receiving as our clinician very soon. All three departments also went through a selection process to identify officers that would be teamed up with Crystal. Our officer will be Sean Fisher and then Tigerd and Sherwood have officers identified as well. And the plan initially to get this program up and running is the Crystal, the clinician will be housed out of Twalton. And they'll she'll team up and ride with each officer for about a two week period of time. So they'll rotate around throughout the three departments, but she'll be housed out of Twalton. And then when if so for Sean Fisher, for example, when he doesn't have Crystal with him, he will be, you know, readily available for our patrol staffing and be able to handle and respond to calls for service that would come in. So we're excited to get this program up and running. It's it's pretty darned close. The next thing I was going to talk about was body worn cameras. We're at a point in time where you approved this funding this in this year's budget to to get this up and running. Really, as we dove into this world of cameras, we wanted to make sure we were, you know, meeting a few guiding principles. We truly believe it's going to improve the accountability and the transparency for our department with our community. It's going to strengthen that community trust and continue to build the solid relationships we have in the community. It's a good thing for our officers. It's a little bit of safety for them. And I truly feel that, you know, it enhances the the opportunities for de-escalation. I think if we're responding to calls for service and dealing with people, just the mere fact that when somebody knows that that is being captured on a video, it might change their behavior just a tad bit, and that's one of the things we're hoping for. And then it's it's really going to enhance the quality of the investigations that our officers already are doing. And it gives us one additional tool for gathering evidence in situations that they investigate. So where we're at right now, as we've researched a lot of different companies that are in this business. There's three big ones that are pretty prevalent in most areas of the country. So we've got a pretty good idea who we're going to go through for that service. It's pretty beginning to be fairly consistent with what all the agencies around us are doing and who they're using for that service. But again, one of our goals here is to be as transparent as possible during this process. We've come up with some pretty good language to start with a policy to kind of dictate, you know, what this program is about, what it will do, what it won't do, kind of the parameters are our officers are going to be working within. Really, when it comes to things that have already been outlined in state statute regarding, you know, how long a video is going to be retained for, when it can be released, when our officers will be activating these cameras, when they won't be activating them. So there's really a lot to think through with a program like this, but I think we're well on our way and we've made some good progress. We applied for some some grant funds. We got one fifteen thousand dollar grant from our insurer C I S to help with this program. And we're also waiting on some federal funding that we submitted for that hopefully we'll have a decision on by next month in September. So that is underway. It's going to talk a little bit. I presented this in years past to the council. Back in two thousand and nineteen, a law took effect that required our police officers to gather specific information on traffic stops and pedestrian stops that our our officers are engaged in. The law took effect in two thousand and nineteen. But if you remember, we were trying to be overachievers, so we started doing this before the law took effect. There's a lot of information here. This is kind of a snapshot of what the numbers look like from January this year through the end of July. The big things to look at is over here on the left, it's got some population estimates. It's really the demographic breakdown of our community. And what we want to do is make sure that this percentage aligns with the traffic stop percentage to make sure we're not spending too much time looking at one group of our community. The some of the issues that are have been discovered with this process throughout the state, it's it's not a perfect process. It's all based on the officer's perception at the time of the traffic stop. They do not ask any, you know, clarifying questions of people about what their race or ethnicity is. So it's not perfect, but it's given us a pretty good idea of who we're contacting in our community. So we keep track of all of the stops we do, whether a person was issued a warning or citation. If an arrest was made, if the vehicle was searched or a person was searched, that's all information that we're looking at. And that we're reporting it every month to the it's being tracked at the state level by the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. And then at the end of the year, they share some information with the state on what those stops are looking like in each community and throughout the state, looking at any trends that might be out there or any specific agencies that might need some extra attention. We have not made that report as an agency needing extra attention, so we're pretty proud of that. But again, it's all information that we're gathering that we want people to have access to if they're if they're interested in it. Because it helped us again further that community trust that we're looking to maintain. So that's a lot about the data about the traffic stop. It's it's all there for whoever is interested in and we compile it on a monthly basis and report it to the state. Just some general crime stats. So a few years ago, our country went from what was called U C R, Uniform Crime Reporting, to what is now called NABERS, National Incident Based Reporting, to really try to give communities an idea of what their police officers are dealing with in terms of criminal activity. So we've we report this information to the state and the national level regularly as well. We've what we've done here is just put a little snapshot together, just trying to compare like term or, you know, specific same same timeframes going back three years from January first through the end of July. And it breaks it down into three general categories, person crimes, property crimes, and society crimes. Person crimes are, you know, your domestics, your assaults, sex or child abuse investigations. Property crime is going to be obviously burglary theft, things like that. Society crimes includes a lot of different categories. Crimes against the community would include things like D Y, weapons charges, drug charges, you know, prostitution, things like that. So you can see our numbers are somewhat consistent, but there are a few differences in there too. And I think we can we can explain how a lot of these numbers are to be what they are today. Person crimes, for example, you see that's a little bit up. Well, we've been in a pretty unique situation with the pandemic. A lot of people were locked down for quite a while and sometimes when people are confined to small spaces, they don't always get along. So we've seen a few more assaults than we probably have in years past. That's a good chunk of our person crimes uptick. Property crimes, if you see or hear the media, what's going on around us, you hear big things and discussions about things like catalytic theft, catalytic converter thefts. Those are very, very common these days, especially on, you know, vehicles like Toyota Priuses and things like that. And we've experienced that in Twalton as well. So those are things that we pay attention to, but it's definitely impacting our community, just like it is others around us. Another indicator for property crimes for us unfortunately is stuff from vehicles where somebody is entering a person's vehicle. Just by the sheer nature we're located, we I know just for example, a couple of weeks ago, we had one specific day where we had one group of people that hit not only our city, but the cities around us. And they targeted our health clubs, our gyms, twenty four hour fitness, L. A. Fitness. They were driving through the parking lot, smashing windows and grabbing backpacks and whatever they could grab out of those vehicles. And I think in one that one specific day, I think we had ten plus calls in just a matter of minutes. And like I said, they hit our area. I know they hit Tigerd and Beaverton as well. So one incident like that can really throw a spike into our numbers. In the society category, you can see it's it's significantly lower than it has been compared to last year. If you remember, Oregon has decriminalized the possession of heroin, meth, cocaine, substances like that. So we're clearly not arresting as many people for situations like that. Unfortunately, we still contact a lot of people that are under the influence or using drugs like that. And and they're addicted. They're addicted in a lot of ways and it forces them to go out and steal to try to maintain their way of life. And the addiction that they're dealing with and a lot of our community members paid a price for that. But that's the reason for that number being so much lower than it has been in years past. It actually would be if we took out D Ys, that number would be even lower than it is now. Our D Y enforcement has actually been up the last couple of years as well. We're arresting more people for D Y than we have in years past as well. One thing that probably most people don't realize, but we rely on a lot is our radio system. It's how we communicate with each other, but it's also how the public calls nine one one and gets people to come and help them for whatever they're dealing with, whether it's a police or fire department or medical call. And back in two thousand and sixteen, voters in in our area passed throughout the county a bond to upgrade that radio system. It was old and antiquated. It'd been in place for over twenty years. And the bond that was passed is is getting very close to being fully up and running. Part of that that bond paid for a new nine one one center that is under construction now just north of Hillsborough. They're anticipating that they'll be fully up and running in that new center by November. Our radio system that is in our vehicles, it's on our persons. They're looking at making the switch over from the analog to the digital system the end of September. There's been a lot that goes goes along with that that process. You can see we we placed via the the bond about three thousand radios in our Washington County area that are our officers, firefighters and are in the vehicles as well. Those all had to be replaced and they also had to build a substantial amount of new towers to transmit these systems. So this is it's pretty big for us. And like I said, we're we're hopeful that this will be fully up and running again fairly soon. But like I said, most people, as long as they get somebody answering that phone when they call nine one one, that's what they're looking for and this this system will hopefully make that a reality for for years to come. And then just a few other things I wanted to talk about. We are recruiting for a new police officer. So if you know anybody out there that is interested in police work, they're getting a little harder to find. We have been fortunate that we have not had a substantial amount of turnover in our department. We've lost a few people to retirements and and things like that. But this position that we're looking to fill is a result of an officer that'd been a police officer about five years, has made the decision. I don't want to be a police officer anymore. I want to do something else in life. And it's been a challenging time for our officers the last year and a half. It's something again that we're dealing with. Fortunately, you know, my peer agencies around us are dealing with this. They're trying to fill a lot more vacancies than we've had to try to fill. So we're fortunate on that front, but we're we're hopeful we're going to be able to find good replacements in the future for officers that either make a career change or move on to other things in in life. So this recruitment is underway. So hopefully, the downside is when we lose a fully trained officer, it takes us about a year after we hire somebody that they're up and running in a fully trained capacity. So our recruitment's underway now. It's open for probably another week or so. But even if everything goes smoothly, we won't have this officer onboard as a new city employee for probably three months and then a year after that of training. So it's something we're dealing with and hopefully we don't have to deal with too much more in the future. And we still have ongoing discussions regarding our school resource officer program. And I think we have a meeting next week with the Task Force Steering Committee. We've had some recent conversations with the schools about the upcoming school year and what's that going, what that's going to look like. They've had some some tension at school board meetings around our area. So we've actually had some conversations that the school boards or school districts request about having an adequate police presence in and around the schools when when they get back up and running in a couple of weeks. So they're good positive conversations. And again, we're very fortunate to have a solid program in place. It's been performing well for a number of years, that's well respected and supported by our community. And we're going to continue to do what we need to do in the future to make sure that this program is successful. And then there was a lot of law changes over the last year or so that impacted police. And and they're all good changes. We're we're definitely adapting to them and implementing them. They just affect us in a lot of different ways. We're going to have conversations even, for example, tomorrow with some of our other city department heads about how homeless issues will be treated in the future. And when people would be restricted from potentially sleeping in public areas and things like that. So those laws are coming our way and we'll we'll be ready for them when they take effect. Some of them talk about police officers' duty to intervene when they see other misconduct being done by police officers. We already have some policies and procedures in place to address that, but this further, you know, clarifies it at the the state law level. Then there's a lot of other things that impacted us regarding, you know, when booking photos can be released, how firearms are stored, you know, how police respond to riot type situations. And even simple things like soon to be all police agencies in the state will be required to be an accredited agency. And you know, that's something that we've had under our belt for ten plus years, so that's not going to impact us a whole lot. But it just, you know, further shows the direction the state's going to make sure that we have professional police officers out there taking care of our community. So those are just a few examples of things that are going on within the department. I'm happy to talk about anything else you might have on your mind. I'm going to stop sharing this.
Thanks, Chief. Questions for the Chief? Council Pratt.
I just had a couple of questions on this mental health clinician. Will she will she spend her whole forty hours riding along with the different officers? Is that how her time will be spent?
Yeah, so she'll be paired up in a in a car with an officer. And again, so they'll be rotating around the south end of the county. So they'll be she'll be with a so, for example, she'll ride with our officer for two weeks. And then she'll ride with the Tigerd officer for two weeks and then the Sherwood officer for two weeks. But she'll show up to work every day at the Twalton Police Department and then hop in the police car from there.
Okay, I guess I'm just wondering, like, say she's riding along in Twalton and a real big issue happens in Tigerd, could her time kind of be swapped out if that happened?
Yeah, so that is the goal, that they will be that resource will be available for the three, well, four cities, honestly, with King City involved as well. So they might be patrolling in Twalton. If something happens in Tigerd, they will go to Tigerd. Something happens in Sherwood, they'll go to Sherwood. So it's that really that regional asset that we have available to us in the south end of the county. We have those resources available to us now. It's just unfortunately, they might be coming from Beaverton or Hillsborough or Forest Grove. And calls like this time is of the essence sometimes, and we got to make sure that that resource is here when we need them.
Right, the de-escalation. And that my other question, I was just wondering on those, the body cameras is like, are how many are there enough available that every officer that's patrolling will have one or how many are available? If not, how many more would be needed?
Yes, so we've got adequate funding to equip every uniformed police officer with a body camera. That would include me and the captains as well. So when we're out interacting with the community, we will have that resource available to us as well. But yes, we have them for for all officers. So we've got four officers assigned in the detective unit. They won't wear one every day unless they're in a situation where they're they've got an identifying vest on and then have a camera available as well.
I guess just last, I just want to thank you for being ahead of the game, like being accredited and always looking to where things are headed. Trying to get there before it's mandated.
Well, I appreciate that. I would think that our community wants the best police department possible out there. And it's upon us to making sure we're meeting those kind of best practices and whatever it might involve. And and kind of proven on a regular basis is that's that's what we're doing.
Other questions for Chief? Council Brooks.
Thank you for your, I mean, this year has been quite a year and the leadership in the community conversations. And then this report's just such so much and keeping up with all the changes that we're that you're adjusting to is it's good to hear about this. And I looked over, the numbers are strong for our equity work, and so I appreciate that. I was curious too with the clinician with perspective. I guess my question is, is she going to be working on just mental health or is it behavioral health? And I'm just curious of some examples of how she supports the force.
So that's a great question. And it each situation our officers respond to, and now that we'll be having this clinician available to us, each situation is always a little bit different. Some of it clearly might be a mental health component that we need to deal with. Some of it could be an alcohol or drug issue, could be a combination of all three. And that's where we rely on this clinician to help guide us in the right direction. Our officers have done an outstanding job, and I think we've got a number of examples that show that how they've been able to respond to a situation, kind of assess it, de-escalate it if need be, but just respond and get the adequate help needed for that unique set of circumstances. And this clinician is going to be there to kind of further and enhance that. And so it's not going to be just be one component. They're going to be dealing with a number of different issues. And and even in this position, it's not solely going to be where they're responding just to people in crisis. It's going to be following up on people that are maybe are folks that need a little bit extra attention, the ones that call nine one one a little bit too frequently for issues that aren't at that level. So they're going to stay fairly busy, you know. What you see in the news doesn't happen every single day in Twalton, but we have our issues in Twalton. Whether it's, you know, there was just coverage about overdose deaths, people dying from the use of heroin. Well, we just had one in Twalton about a week or so ago. So we don't have them every single day, but we have those types of issues occurring here. So that's really what we're looking for is that clinician to be able to field a number of different issues that come our way.
That's good to know. And so I imagine she would do resource and referrals things as well, not just talking and therapeutic conversations with the officers. And so that that would be resources and referrals and helping people get different kinds of help.
Yeah, totally, because, you know, we're relying on people with that training or expertise that are tied into that world a little bit more than we are when it comes to knowing who the providers are, knowing what resources they have available to them and where to point people to get them the help they need.
You know, it'll be interesting to see what happens when they, I know they're working on the recovery center too for Washington County, so. Um. And I feel like there's another thing. Well, congratulations on the grant on the body cameras and and just thanks again for your leadership. It's just been really, it's it's been a real pleasure for as part of my role as a counselor to get to know you better, to be involved with the Police Foundation and to be involved with all the ways that we're working and walking into the future and especially during a time where we know that there's more there's more alcohol abuse has gone up, a lot of things have gone up during the pandemic. And to have trusted police force with good leadership is really a strength right now when there's a lot of people going through such hard times. So I appreciate it. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief? I've just got a quick one, Chief. So I looked at the policy and just let people know about the policy for body worn cameras is about nine pages. So if someone does want to look into that and read it and has some feedback, who should they contact with their feedback?
They can always contact me. You know, we've done a pretty good job putting that policy together based on every policy that's out there. We've looked at a number of different policies and what's been working well and what hasn't been working well. So I'm always happy to talk through those questions that people might have or any feedback that they have as well.
Okay, so they should just shoot you an email?
Shoot me an email or give me a call.
All right, thank you. Anything else for Chief? Thanks, Chief. Appreciate the update and look forward to getting the cameras rolled out and having officers without there, having cameras on, you know, out on the street so people can feel a bit more secure and, you know, it it works both ways that, you know, this is nice that with our community conversations that please people ask for this, we're doing it. And it's going to put that level of transparency we all desire in our city that we know how good our officers are, so we'll be able to see that.
All right, thank you very much.
Right. So I have number two is our Council Media Agenda Review Communications and Roundtable. Tonight, I think we're up to Council President Grimes is up for the pledge. All right, I don't think we have any proclamations, don't see any. We only have one item on consent. That's kind of nice. So we don't have one item consent and that's at any question on that item on the minutes? Okay, good. So going with that, we'll start our roundtable and I'll start with the Councilor Sacco.
Good evening, everyone. On August sixteenth, I attended the elected officials meeting with Suzanne Bonamici. And it's my first in-person meeting since when elected, so that was really exciting. I got to meet a lot of people for the first time, so it was a great experience for me. There were some key takeaways that I had first. Suzanne talked about the F D A approval of the vaccine coming in September and surprise, surprise, it has the Pfizer vaccine came out earlier than she mentioned. So it's currently the Pfizer vaccine is currently F D A approved. So I was really excited. Uh so I was really excited to see that um come earlier than the Congresswoman stated. Uh so anybody out there that was waiting for that approval, it is, but the Pfizer vaccine is now um approved. Uh the Congresswoman also talked about, you know, how she's uh, you know, she's, she's pro vaccination, pro mask. So she usually only hears from elected officials or uh her constituents that are um anti-mask, anti-vaccine, and she would really like to hear from those that even have, you know, the same opinion as her. Um see, tell her what's working, um any concerns, what's not working, any ideas. Um so I encourage those um to reach out to the Congresswoman um with all um opinions. Uh she really wanted to hear from um more people with varying degrees of um of outlooks. Um I voiced my concerns about our transportation is, issues we have here in Tuolton. Um traffic issues to be more specific. Um and I also had brought up some specific concerns um that I personally experienced uh through my professional career um and uh my, them wanting to come to Tuolton. Um and just their concerns with traffic here and bringing a business to Tuolton with those traffic concerns. So I did bring those up. Um so it's been interesting to have um, you know, my professional career looking to move to Tuolton. Um have an office here, but those concerns with traffic that, you know, we hear from people every day. So it's been, I've been in an interesting position to be a part of those conversations. Um I did bring those up. I also expressed concerns about affordable housing here in Tuolton and surrounding areas. Um as did lots of people. And just to mention some other topics that were discussed um at that meeting. Uh mental health issues in our schools, voting age and the voting process, upcoming school years as it relates to COVID. Fires, climate change, there was lots of topics discuss, discussed. Um so I think it's a very valuable um meeting and um Frank was there as well. I'm sure he'll talk about that. Uh and then also attended Viva Tuolton yesterday. Uh it was a great event. Um it was a, a great turnout and I felt it was done um very safely. Saw a lot of people wearing masks, keeping their distance. Uh it was super fun. Um they have two more events. Uh if people can make it, Wednesday, the twenty fifth at the library from three to five. And Saturday, the twenty eighth at Tuolton Community Park from three to six.
All right, thank you. Council Pratt.
Hi, um I attended the Clackamas County Action or Climate Action Task Force meeting. And um we spent most of our ti, well, we spent most of our time working on the vision statement and also a lot of time um learning all kinds of different softwares that, oh, half the group that's over forty was a little slow at picking up. That was interesting. Um I also um attended a meeting with the um group working on the um land and native people acknowledgement for Tuolton. And um we um looked at a lot of different, everybody was tasked with bringing um a couple of land acknowledgements they liked or didn't like. And we just kind of pulled out the things we um really wanted in that land acknowledgement. Then um the C four Metro meeting was canceled, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh let's see, Council Hillier.
Hi, um I did not attend any meetings on behalf of the city.
All right, that was quick. Council Brooks.
I'll make up for that. No, I'm just kidding. Um I, the first meeting, um I attended the PAB meeting on the Thursday, the August twelfth. And we kind of went over the home application and they updated it to make it a little easier for um the users and the reviewers. And um so we went through kind of line by line. And then we also went over the um the calendar for the community development block grants and the home um application cycle. And so just FYI. And, and because some people are new, um the applications for every application, any applicant that applies for these grant monies. They have to go to the proposal workshops. And those workshops are coming up August twenty fifth and August twenty sixth, August twenty fifth for the CDBG application and home application, August twenty sixth. And then um the spot, we'll go through all the evaluations and then the um projects get funded July first. So this, this starts, the whole process starts in August and ends in July. And it's a long process. Um um but we award a lot of money for affordable housing, so it's good work. So if anybody ever has questions on that, just let me know. Um but I'm looking forward to the process being a little simpler. And the other meeting I went to was the Tuolton Arts Advisory Committee. And in case you haven't noticed, there's a new um traffic box wrap. There's one that was existing by the library and now there's one kind of by the Marquee Center. And there will be an application process. We have decided to move forward with more of these traffic box wraps. There's only a limited amount that Tuolton owns. Um and we've been using existing art, but we kind of are running out of the appropriate art. So there will be an ask that goes up on our website for artists to submit proposals um for uh the traffic box wraps. And there'll be some monetary um monies that go through. The Arts Committee is also gonna um be part of a Basell Creek meeting on September fourteenth, which is a joint meeting with T-Park, which I know the committee's excited about. And then we also talked about Viva Tuolton. Um and I just want to give a special shout out to Ju, Julie Luderman. She has done an amazing job with all the psyche grant things, adjusting to this time of COVID. Splitting apart and leading the um Viva Tuolton during the pandemic, making it safe. Doing the uh Willowbrook, I think it's Willowbrook, right? The uh daycare, fifty kids a week safely. So just outstanding amount of work during a time where there's such a moving target with COVID and so much stress in the background. So I just wanna give a real special, and she does such a great job with the Arts Committee too. Which is a, you know, it's a uh what'd I say, a lot of creative nonlinear folks that have very specific and good um excellent perspectives on art. And it's quite a committee. So she's always um so flexible, so positive. And um we're in the middle of the Viva Tuolton experience, so I just really felt that it was important to say how much we appreciate her and really all of our city staff during such as I think this has been maybe one of the most stressful couple of weeks. Uh just with adjusting to Delta and sort of going through this disappointment and adjustment. And um I just really wanna thank all of our city staff and um anyway, and just hope everybody and my fellow counselors are all doing okay during this time.
Thank you, Councilor Brooks. I'll pass that along.
All right. Council Reyes.
I am like Councilor Hiller. I did not uh attend any meetings on behalf of the city this, this last couple of weeks.
All right. Council President Grimes.
Hello, everybody. Um I did not attend any meetings on behalf of the city. But I did want to um echo what Council Brooks said. Um I had wonderful feedback from people about the Viva Tuolton this past weekend. And I think that staff just did a fantastic job of sort of reimagining a community festival in the era of COVID and how to bring it to a lot of different neighborhoods, make it relevant, make it fun, and yet make it safe. So I commend them on that. And hopefully people, if they have availabilities this Wednesday or this coming Saturday, will be able to um catch the movable feast for the eyes, that is Viva Tuolton comes to the different um areas in the city. And then also um on that same note, there's so many people saying how thrilled they are that the library's back open and how happy they are to be able to go in there, because that is just such a beloved institute in this city. So um that's all. And again, thank you very much to staff for making all these wonderful things possible for us and everyone who lives here.
Thank you. Uh I have a few things. Uh going back to August twelfth, I had a Zoom session between myself and Metro Counselor Garrett Rosenthal. Uh he does an informal meet with each of the mayors every month or so. Uh the subject of discussion on the twelfth was traffic, imagine that. And congestion and a Basell Creek Urban Renewal Zone, even though Metro has nothing to do it, to do with it. Uh he likes to be kept in the loop, what's going on uh down there. So we talked about that a little bit. Also talked about, you know, what the efforts are at Metro right now, what they're looking at. Of course, always uh remind them about the tipping fees and solid waste fees that, you know, that we need to have um really good heads up at when they're gonna increase rates, uh given what we went through before. And he's committed to that. Uh then on the thirteenth, I had a phone call with Congresswoman Bonamici's staff about transportation dollars. We were following up about the uh Boone Story Active Transportation Corridor and how it didn't make the final cut. Uh so we just had, just had discussions about how in the future, uh if there are still earmarks, how is the city best uh served? On getting some of our projects on the shortlist and making it across the finish line. So we had some talks about that and uh they're gonna have one of her staffers attend our uh five mayor lunches to be more in contact, uh because one of our complaints is that it seems both the dollars when it comes to federal dollars or ODOT dollars, any kind of dollars for transportation, even in Washington County dollars go to uh that little swath of cities on the other side of the county. Uh and they recognize that. And uh they mentioned that the Congresswoman uh is still a very active supporter of the Boone Story Active Transportation Corridor. And tying in with that, uh on the sixteenth, uh Council Sacco, when I were at that meeting, I kind of joked, it was the first time I actually seen uh Council Sacco in the flesh. Since she became a counselor. So it was kind of weird to see people in person. But one of the things, uh Council Sacco, uh both she and I were shocked to hear is that all that work that cities did to get those traffic and transportation projects to their congresspeople to get funded. It's not in the Senate bill. None of them are funded. So all that work was for naught. Uh and so there's another way, they're gonna try to get the money, do some other program. Uh so if not, we might have a second crack at the apple. Um but uh it, it just astounds me that the Senate bill didn't have any of those projects number funded. And they now have to work all this out between the two different, different bills. And from what I'm hearing, it's not going so well about the transportation funding between the House and the Senate. Um on the seventeenth, I got the I got the benefit, if you will, to attend two uh Washington County Board of Commissioners meetings in one day. So the ten AM meeting was the uh their approval of our urban renewal zone down Basell Creek. I attended along with city staff and Elaine Howard. Uh if they had any questions, they did not have any questions. They were very grateful for what we did about the Basell Creek Bridge. Uh it's Basell Canyon Bridge, I'm sorry. They did acknowledge that they are gonna be better partners on uh climate-related items on design items and especially on traffic concerns. So they got our message loud and clear from the letter. Uh so we were surprised, I was surprised how quickly was, went through. Uh there was no questions and they were very supportive of our efforts for increased partnership. Then later that afternoon, uh that's when Chair Harrington, during the work session, uh floated the idea of restricting indoor dining. But I'll just stop there, because that basically died last week. Uh but it is coming back up on tomorrow. I had a conversation with Chair Harrington today about uh enforcement of the mask mandate in Washington County. Um she's looking to the County Health Department to be the receiver of complaints from folks. And that being that if you go into an establishment and their, that is average is employing, employees are not wearing masks. You can call the County Health Department and let them know that. It's gonna be a complaint-driven process. And it's not gonna be like immediate fines or anything like that. She's proposing a series of steps of education before they take anything drastic. Uh so my specific question to her was, so the Tuolton Police Department should be filling these calls, correct? It should be the Washington County Health uh Department. She said yes. And that they have a number established and they're uh ready for phone calls, depending on what the board commissioners do tomorrow. By trying to implement a uh, you know, mask enforcement policy in Washington County. Uh on the eighteenth, I attended the Great Portland A Board Meeting. Uh they are actively recruiting businesses to the area, or remember, that's the metro area that includes Vancouver. Um they're doing well in recruitment. Uh of course, no surprise, most of the recruitment is not for downtown Portland. It's for the areas around Portland. They're still uh working to get uh Portland's uh reputation back. They are doing okay financially. Of course, they took a hit during uh COVID, but it wasn't too bad. They lost a couple of big members, but they're heavily recruiting new members to replace those lost funds. Um where else? Then on the twenty second, no, actually, later that day, I had my first in-person meeting with Commissioner Five. Uh we had two-hour coffee at New Seasons where she brought me up to speed on uh what she's up to, what her goals are as a Washington County Commissioner. And I basically did a Tuolton one-on-one download, Tuolton in twenty years. What's happened here in the last twenty years in two hours. Uh so she is uh least knows the basics of what's going on here. She's very act, she wants to learn more about Tuolton, even though it's not in her district. Um she is aware what's going on, because she does represent all the counties, so she wants to stay in touch. So it was a really nice meeting. Uh and then finally, yeah, on the twenty second yesterday, uh Viva Tuolton, I want to thank the staff especially the volunteers. There was an army of Metro volunteers with their green t-shirts, so helping out at the event. Uh felt sorry for the shaved ice guy. He was super busy. That was a big hit, free shaved ice. People don't turn that down. Everybody was running around with a big thing of shaved ice. And I, I talked to Julie and Heidi, those had to be the biggest piñatas I've ever seen. Those three piñatas were gigantic. And I guess they come from the uh, the Mexican market next to uh Lee's Kitchen. That's who they got them from, that, that big. And the kids, if you saw the pictures or anything from the city's website or Facebook's feed, when those things broke, it was chaos. But it was fun to watch. Uh and that's all I have. Anything else uh for work session tonight? All right, so I guess we have a little break here. We'll come back at seven PM for our regular uh city council meeting. We'll see you in about ten.
Recording stop.